This meeting of the November 8th Board of Education is now called to order. Welcome everyone present and those viewing on air. The Wichita Public Schools will be the district of choice in our region where all students and staff are empowered to dream, believe, and achieve. And again, I thank you for you joining us tonight. Please join me in a moment of silence. Our pledge of allegiance tonight will be led by the North High Junior JROTC Cadets Eileen Hernandez, Elena Cox, Winter Walker, and David Alvarez. Would you please rise for the pledge of allegiance?
[inaudible] 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 [inaudible]
You may post the colors.
Thank you, sir. Order, colors. Post. Colors, pull. Present, arms. Post. Please join me for the pledge of allegiance. Pledge of allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. Order, arms. Post.
Forward, march.
Thank you, North High JROTC cadets. Patrick, first item, please.
First item, under reports, Superintendent's Student Advisory Council.
Welcome to the Wichita Board of Education meeting. Please state your name and you can get right into your report.
Hi, my name is Derek Perry. I am a senior at West High.
Go ahead and pull that mic right up to you.
Sorry. Hi, my name is Derek Perry and I am a senior at West High.
My name is Mackenzie Bino. I'm 16 years old and I am a junior at Heights High School.
Okay, so a few things that we did talk about during our last session at WSCU was how to get students and teachers re-engaged in a learning environment in the classroom. And so we sort of talked about how to like do simple things first off as to simply acknowledge each other, a simple hello to each other, a simple, "How are you doing today?" Because like with COVID and the pandemic and staying home for a year, you like we have definitely like broken that bond between teacher and student. And so simply just like taking that step forward and doing simple things first to like reconnect and rebuild that bridge can go a long way for like, I know for me as a student, like a simple hello from like a teacher can do like a million things for me in the beginning of my day.
And then adding on to get more students engaged, we did talk about getting more engaged and just having a better school spirit, getting more engaged in sports activities. I know because of COVID, you know, we had that whole basically year and a half off. A lot of students didn't get that social interaction that they would when they are when they are at school. And we're just trying to figure out how to get students more involved and trying to catch up on everything that they did miss out on. We also did go over how to make students and staff feel more safe at school, whether it's, you know, making sure that the classroom door is getting locked, making sure that the teacher is the one to open that door. Simple things like that can make a student and the staff feel more safe, just the environment as a whole.
And also I may want to add that by locking the door, it also prevents students who are like skipping class, a chance to sort of like they're shown in a way that like this is a serious learning environment and if you cannot handle it, then you need to be like readjusted in like in a separate environment so you can get your education. Because I know if I'm taking notes in the middle of a lecture and some random kid comes in like 20 minutes late and then like they have to be re-caught up on everything, that disturbs everybody who was there from getting dedicated to getting their notes done. So I think by like locking the door, it shows that we are serious about kids coming to school, coming to class to get their education so that they can move on to like the next phase of their life, whether that be college or going to a technical school or whatever their choices may be. That school is a serious place to be in that you need to take it seriously.
I want to add one more thing. We did go over how to get more students involved in the classroom as well, making sure that students know what we're doing for that day, making sure that students know what the essential question is, really just making sure that no one's getting left behind and that we're all moving on as a group and together and it's not someone's, you know, next day's coming along and they can't remember what they did last class. Just making sure that we're all moving on together.
One last final thing was how we're going to sort of have the teacher and student like work together. So that means either like using the phone or the laptop. So I know a lot of kids nowadays are on TikTok doing their DVS licks and that in that order. So we want teachers to sort of be able to use that in their advantage, so being able to like have free time to be on their phone or just have a simple brain break and to get on their phone or just use Kahoot or quizzes or whatever to like get engaged with their phone so that after it's done, they're less tempted to, if you know what I mean? Because like it's sort of like urging to scratch that itch when it comes to the phone. So if we like sort of include it into like the daily work schedule, we're able to solve that problem issue, that issue in the classroom.
And I think that's all.
And I think that is it.
Thank you very much. We appreciate that report as always from the Super SAC. And I hope you will stick around to, you touched on one of the topics that we will be discussing tonight on schools as a trusted, safe place. So thank you for mentioning that. And we truly appreciate your efforts in trying to help us re-engage staff and students. Thank you very much. Patrick, next item, please.
Next item, under reports, good news, 2021 Turkey Drive benefiting the United Methodist Open Door.
Good evening, President Reeser and Superintendent Thompson and members of the board. Yes, we are, after a year hiatus, going to again be participating in the United Methodist Open Door Turkey Drive next Friday. We're very excited. It's a tradition that we have been doing for many years and it's nice to be able to bundle up and brave the cold and accept a bunch of food donations to go help others in the community. I'd like to invite Patty Stever to come forward along with Deanne Smith from United Methodist Open Door to talk a little bit more about it.
Thank you, President Reeser, members of the board, Dr. Thompson. We have been involved with Open Door in this Turkey Drive since 2006. The students really got involved in 2007 doing fundraisers, having a lot of fun, helping the community. And, you know, we couldn't do it without our schools and our community, just going out and just doing what we can to make Thanksgiving and the holidays a little bit better for some of our families that are struggling. So I want to introduce Deanne Smith with Open Door because we have a partnership with Open Door and she's probably going to give you some more statistics on, yeah, she just said uh huh, on the Turkey Drive and the impact that our district has made over the years.
Thank you. So yes, it's, we couldn't do it without the school district, the students, the faculty, the administration, all of that. The Turkey Drive really took off when USD 259 joined us. So since 2006, we'll be celebrating 15 years with the hiatus of this COVID madness, like everybody else had to adapt. But with this partnership, you as a school district and all that entails has raised a collective total of $151,660, which, and collected a total of 37,224 turkeys and 266,327 sides. That means that you have as a collective fed 40,353 families or over 100,000 individuals in those families. And that's just our, yeah. And that's just our organization because part of what this is about is also gathering enough that we can share with other community agencies that don't have the same kind of capacity for storage and all that that we do, that if we are overly blessed, then we can be a blessing to others. And so it's a, it's not just about Open Door, it's about a community effort in making sure that during the holidays, those Thanksgiving turkeys can turn into Christmas turkeys and all of that and all the sides that go with that. So we just wanted to take a moment to say thank you for that partnership. It's vital, not only to us, but to the larger community to make sure that other agencies and the larger community gets what, at least a moment to say thanks and give a moment of gratitude for one another. So thank you.
Thank you.
And I just want to invite you all out to the water walk next Friday, November 19th. Dr. Thompson will be in her turkey suit. I think I just put you on the spot. But we just invite you to come out and bring a turkey, bring some side items, just help support this wonderful district initiative to help our community and have some fun with us. We'll be starting at seven and go till about 9:30, 10 o'clock. So come on down. Thanks.
Thank you. I'm sure there will be some, that's another reason to pay attention, our social media pages. I'm sure we'll have some pictures of Dr. Thompson in her turkey suit. And the announcement about actually if you want to see it in person. Patrick, next item.
Next item, under reports, Second Annual Legacy Golf Fund Tournament Update and Recognition.
Hello again. And, you know, first, I'm just very excited about listening to what the Turkey Drive did. That's a great thing to help our community. And now, we also have, talking about our Legacy Golf Tournament that the district held last month and it helped with our CTE programs. And I want to invite Holly Wilson to come down to talk a little bit more about what all that entailed, but also to thank our partners that made this able to be happen, to happen.
Welcome, Holly.
Good evening, President Reeser, Vice President Blankley, Superintendent Thompson, and members of the board. I'm thrilled to be here tonight to share the good news of our district's Second Annual Legacy Fund Golf Classic, recognize our key sponsors and our planning committee. When we started discussing this event in late 2019, we really didn't know what to expect or how our district partners would respond and support the idea. Two years later, we are recapping a sold-out event and partners are excited to jump back in for year three. The Second Annual Legacy Fund Golf Classic was held on Friday, October 8th at Crestview Country Club with some of the best weather October had to offer, and it was hot, too. This year's tournament generated an astounding $105,000 in revenue. Proceeds from the tournament, which exceeded $70,000, will support college and career readiness opportunities, including funding credentialing and certification for students and CTE pathways across the district, thus creating more opportunities for our underserved students to develop market value assets, a priority for our students as they graduate high school. A few highlights of the tournament include breakfast catered by our culinary students at Northwest, Southeast, South, Heights, and North, and coordinated by Bill Loudermilk at East High. Six interactive booths across the course that showcased our career pathways, credentialing, and workplace learning opportunities. Huge thank you to Kelly Beilafeld and the Office of College and Career Readiness for the amazing job they did in creating content and opportunities for our golfers to become immersed in our mission. Several members of our district leadership team and quite a few district staff golfed in the tournament. We even had a few WPS staff members in the winner's circle. Luke Gannon, former Heights High School graduate and current professional golfer, was on hand for celebrity shots at hole seven, providing an additional fundraising opportunity. And the most exciting thing of the day, John Hall, a retired district employee, made his first ever hole-in-one from 164 yards at hole 12, sponsored by Real Men, Real Heroes. Joining me this evening are our valued district partners and top-tier sponsors, Credit Union of America, Sesna Beach Craft by Textural and Aviation, and Spirit Aero Systems. I will bring each organization up individually to briefly address the board and to be recognized. First, our presenting sponsor with a $20,000 investment, Credit Union of America. We have some familiar faces here. We have Bradley Dyer, Development Officer, and Nate Rezig, Event Specialist. When you think about a presenting sponsor for an event, you really want a partner whose core value is aligned with your organization's mission and goals. CUA is just as passionate about educating the future workforce of South Central Kansas. We couldn't be happier that CUA was on board for the second year as our presenting sponsor. I'm going to turn it over to them.
President Reeser, Superintendent Thompson, members of the board, and to everyone, congratulations on staging a successful and a fantastic Legacy Golf Tournament. I got to let you know, we had a blast. But we don't, we want to make it clear, we understood the assignment. We knew, we knew that this was a means to an end, to give opportunities for higher education to more of our kids. And we got that message and we were happy to partner with you as the educators credit union. Educators started this credit union in 1935 at East High School. And as a not-for-profit financial cooperative, we take very seriously our commitment to give back to the community, especially in the field of education and the Wichita Public Schools particularly. So on behalf of our CEO, Mr. Frank Schaffner, on behalf of Nate Rezig, our events coordinator that helped to pull all of this together, and the entire staff at CUA, thank you for having us here tonight and we look forward to our continued partnership. Thank you very much.
Thank you.
Thank you, Bradley and Nate. Next up is one of our legacy sponsors with a $10,000 investment, one of our longstanding strategic partners, Sesna Beach Craft by Textural and Aviation, who is also back again for the second year. Here with us tonight is Caroline Nichols, K-12 Program Manager.
Good evening, everyone. Our partnership with the Wichita Public Schools is very important to us and very meaningful to us, especially as we work to increase exposure to the youth in our community, right, and show them the career opportunities in the aviation industry right here in their backyard in Wichita. Thank you so much for allowing us to play a part in this opportunity and continue to grow the youth in our community. We always have a great turnout for our high school internship program and looking forward to continuing this partnership.
Thank you, Caroline. And last but not least, our second legacy sponsor, also with an investment of $10,000, another longstanding strategic partner, Spirit Aero Systems. Joining us tonight is Jennifer Marshall, Community Relations Coordinator.
Good evening, everyone. Just on behalf of Spirit and their employees, we just want to say thank you. We really value our partnership with Wichita Public Schools. We do that in several ways, but the CTE program is very important to us for the students recognizing those skilled manufacturing jobs are just as important as the other things that we do. And so working with the CTE program is very important to us, so we are very happy to partner with you on the golf tournament. Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you, Jennifer. From the bottom of my heart, I want to thank each of you for your support of the Legacy Fund Golf Classic and making it as wildly impactful as we all envisioned. We could not imagine building our future workforce without your input and support. For board members, a full list of tournament sponsors is provided in the event recap in your packets. Pulling off an event of this magnitude takes a group of dedicated committee members to be successful. Jennifer Hartman, who is with us tonight, and Kim Kennedy, both from our grants office, take on a large part of the planning and execution to ensure it runs smoothly. Jennifer serves as our marketing chair and Kim serves as our registration and finance chair. At this time, I'd like to recognize and thank the rest of our tournament committee not in attendance tonight. Our golfer experience co-chairs, Eric Philippi, Eric Hofer-Holdman, Leroy Parks, and Mark Jolliffe. Our CT Encore's Promotion Chair, Kelly Beilafeld. Logistic co-chairs, Jay Means, Jay Dorsett, and Kelly Cooley. Sponsor volunteer chair, Teresa Hoover. Welcome breakfast chair, Judy Elam, and our awards ceremony chair, Kayla Pennick. I cannot thank this committee enough and the rest of our dedicated volunteers for their help in pulling off this amazing event. Thank you so much for your time this evening and I look forward to seeing you at Crestview on Friday, October 7th, 2022, for our Third Annual Legacy Fund Golf Classic.
We appreciate everyone who participated and it was a fun event. Cheryl Logan and I were out there and the superintendent was out there and look forward to the third year of this great event. Thank you very much for all the sponsors and everything you've done for us. Thank you. Patrick, next item, please.
Next item, under reports, Service Employees International.
Welcome, Esau Freeman.
Good evening, board members, President Reeser, Dr. Thompson, and everyone. Appreciate the time to speak this evening. If it hadn't been so dark outside, the nice weather may have made me not make it to the meeting this evening. I'm sure everybody felt that way. We just want to say thanks for hearing, you know, the concerns of the employees and how they've been stretched thin here and there. And we know that it's been difficult to get people to come in and hire people, so we do appreciate you guys recognizing that and doing what you can to fill those holes. Other than that, we really just appreciate everything. I want to say my condolences to the board members who didn't win. It's been a pleasure working with you guys. And congratulations to some of the new board members who are here this evening. Thank you for everybody putting in their opportunity to run and putting forth the effort to do that. So not a whole lot of the things, just please continue to make sure that everybody's being taken care of as you have in the past. Thanks.
Thank you, Esau. Patrick, next item, please.
Next item, under reports, United Teachers of Wichita.
Welcome, Mr. Lewis.
Thank you, President Reeser, Dr. Thompson, members of the board, Brent Lewis, President of United Teachers of Wichita. First, I want to say thank you to Derek and Mackenzie for coming here and sharing the work that you're doing in the Super SAC and allowing me to be a part of that. I really appreciate that. And I also want to thank all of you who stepped forward to put yourself out there and serve in an often thankless volunteer position of great importance to our community. We appreciate the sacrifices you make to serve and the courage to make tough decisions on behalf of students, staff, and our Wichita community. We also thank you for listening to the advocacy of UTW and seeing the hard work our teachers and staff are putting in to return students who have been out of school during COVID back to some sense of normalcy in our schools. The retention bonuses you have already approved and those that you are considering today are important messages to the talented and hard-working staff of Wichita Public Schools, that you see them and value their service and commitment to our students and community. Recognizing the challenges we face as the children of our community bring all of society's difficulties with them through the doors of our schools, we also welcome the same consideration for how much is on our plates in the classroom right now. We look forward to continuing conversations about ensuring a sustainable workload for our dedicated educators through these current difficult circumstances and for the long haul. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Lewis. Patrick, next item, please.
Next item, public communications.
Our first speaker is Mr. Alan Stuckey. And if you'll give us just a second to get set up here and we'll... And we promise we're not taking this off of your three minutes.
And I'm a preacher and I'll promise to try and stay to three minutes.
Okay.
Good evening, everyone. My name is Reverend Alan Stuckey and I'm the pastor of a church just a few blocks from here but whose members live all throughout the city. I am a member of the Greater Wichita Ministerial League, which has a special focus on the African-American community here in Wichita. And my wife and I have two children, one who is in third grade at Riverside Elementary and the other who will be in kindergarten there next year. I say all of this to say that I have a personal invested interest in multiple communities throughout our city and school district. And also, I want to say that I am deeply appreciative of the hard work that this board has put in the last couple of years. Genuinely, I thank you. I come today to raise an issue not of policy, social issues, or partisan politics, but rather one of structure. Today, I'm asking that the Board of Education would begin the process to make a change to the procedure used to elect school board representatives. Kansas State Statute Number 72-8003 allows school districts to elect board members in one of three ways. You can see the handout for reference. In short, option A allows for voters from the whole district to vote for any school board candidate in both the primary and the general election. Option C says that only people within each smaller member district can vote for their representative in both the primary and the general election. Option B, which is what we are currently doing, is a mix of these two. Member district only voting in the primary, but everyone can vote for all positions in the general election. Besides being supremely confusing, I believe that this voting system is also ultimately taking away the voice and right of our diverse neighborhoods to choose who they want to represent their community on the school board. Even though board members theoretically represent one of six regional member districts, by having everyone in the larger district vote for all of these representatives, it effectively makes all of them at-large board members rather than representatives of their smaller regional member districts. I believe that this effectively silences the voices of our unique neighborhoods and takes away our right to choose who we want to be represented by. Or more simply put, I live in District 6. It is not right for the voters in Districts 1, 2, 3, 4, and 5 to be choosing who represents our neighborhood on the school board. And likewise, I have no business choosing who represents any of those districts either. Fortunately, I believe you can begin to change this. In the state statute, option C allows only for eligible voters within each member district to vote for their representative in both the primary and the general elections, as well as one at-large board member for the whole district. I believe that changing our voting procedure to option C would allow for our neighborhoods to have their voices and concerns more clearly and accurately heard and represented on the school board. And as a side note, we already know that this is the right thing to do as a community. The Wichita City Council has similar geographic districts as the school board, and in those elections, only people within those districts can vote for their city council representative. School board representatives should be chosen the same way. Changing our procedure to option C is the most fair, equitable, democratic, and actually representative way to elect our school board members. We just need to make the changes to the structure. Please consider changing our voting procedure to option C as soon as possible. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Stuckey. Our next speaker is Sandra Rankin.
Good evening, Superintendent Dr. Alicia Thompson, Board of Education, President Mr. Stan Reeser, and other Board of Education members. Thanks for the opportunity to speak. As a retired school psychologist from the Wichita Public Schools and serving as the Wichita branch NAACP Education Chair, I would also like to thank you for your time spent addressing the challenging, the very challenging health, safety concerns created by... the very challenging health, safety concerns created by COVID-19. This evening, I am addressing the Board of Education because of voting and representation concerns. In our past general election, I found there was confusion in all districts among voters about the number of Board of Education candidates to be on their ballot. You remind the voters to vote for candidates in all indicated Board of Education districts that are on their ballot. However, confusion about the candidates and the voters' identified representative district creates the reluctance to vote. At our Northeast Heights Neighborhood Association in District One, for our monthly scheduled one-hour meeting, we invited the two District One City Council candidates. They made presentations and answered questions. Because of our timed meeting, we couldn't invite the ten candidates that were seeking the four Board of Education positions that would be on the same ballot for District One. As you know, voter turnout has been lower in our Wichita City and Board of Education general elections as compared to our state and federal general elections. However, Board of Education's decisions significantly affect our future leaders. Maybe there would be a better turnout and less confusion and voting about representation if the Wichita City Council and Wichita Board of Education general election procedures were aligned. Also, advertisement for all Board of Education candidates except the at-large candidate would be less expensive. As Chair of the NAACP Education Committee and retired USD 259 educator, I appreciate your consideration of this request, which affects our Wichita Board of Education general election procedure. Thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Rankin. You may start.
Good evening and thank you very much for your time to speak. My name is Mike Redondo. I am a full-time professional with the Boy Scouts of America here in Wichita, Kansas. In short, scouting is fun with a purpose. We bring families outside and teach young boys and girls skills like cooking, family life, citizenship in the community, emergency preparedness, communications, personal fitness, personal finance, and the list goes on. We offer leadership skills, character development, and education in good citizenship. If you've ever wished that our nation had more leaders who were trustworthy, loyal, helpful, or friendly, if you wish that more of your colleagues or coworkers were courteous, kind, obedient, and cheerful, if you wish we had more students who were thrifty, brave, clean, and reverent, then one need look no further than the Boy Scouts of America. I'm here tonight because a child can join Cub Scouting absolutely free of charge for the rest of the year, but I can't get the message out to enough of our families. Of the 54 elementary schools in USD 259, maybe half have taken the time to speak with us about how we can share the message of scouting opportunities with their students and their families. As you heard this evening, and as one of our scout parents and adolescent psychologists with Via Christi and an expert volunteer with the American Heart Association, our youth are in desperate need of community, connection, and exercise, all three available through programs at the Boy Scouts of America. Scouting has served in crisis throughout America's history, and the best way we can serve now, following the pandemic, is to give as many youth as possible access to these life-changing programs. As I've seen from visiting our schools, our youth are ready to get back outside. And we've recently embraced a family-centered model that allows all members of the family, boys, girls, moms, and dads, to come out and build memories and share these experiences together. This might seem easy for me to say, being a paid professional of the Boy Scouts, but the matter is, I am an Eagle Scout myself from Troop 129 in Miraloma, California. I truly believe in this program because I've seen firsthand what it can do with a life. I would not be who I am today if it weren't for my time in scouting. I wouldn't know how to cook for me and my beautiful wife if it weren't for scouting. I wouldn't have known how to live off of only what I could fit in my Jeep for five years if it weren't for my time in scouting. And I certainly wouldn't be comfortable speaking in front of all you tonight if it weren't for my time in scouting. As I said, I believe in this program and I ask for your help in sharing these opportunities with as many of our young boys and girls as possible. I've left some materials for your reference. If anyone's willing to listen for just a few more minutes past my three minutes here tonight, please reach out to me. I'll be thrilled to speak with you. Thank you.
Thank you, sir. Patrick, next item, please.
Next item under Education, Elementary and Secondary School Emergency Relief Fund Plans.
Dr. Thompson, I'll turn it over to you to introduce the topic.
I want to thank you for allowing us to have this opportunity to continue to have further conversations around our, we call it ESER, is what we call it, but the Elementary and Secondary School Emergency Relief Fund. We have a lot of information on our website for folks to continue to explore that tool, but we also feel it's important to be able to come before the board in more of a public setting for those folks who don't have means to look at the website but have opportunities to watch us live here, to be able to continue to share how we're using our ESER dollars and some of the impact that we will begin to see in some of those areas. So again, transparency is very important, I know, to you all. And so we will continue to be as transparent as we can. And we'll also, at the end of this presentation, begin to talk about more opportunities for additional input. We've had some at the beginning, along as we started this work, and all along the way, we will continue to ask for input from our community, our families, our students, and so on, so that we can continue to direct the dollars in the way in which our community and the board sees fit. So with that being said, I have my two colleagues here that will share, begin to share additional information. And then following that, our strategic plan will also kind of bleed into this presentation. So you'll have two things back to back that will really kind of paint a good picture for our community and our stakeholders around our work with ESER. So without further ado, I'll turn it over to my colleagues.
Thank you, Dr. Thompson. Good evening, President Reeser, Superintendent Thompson, Vice President Blankley, members of the board. Again, I'm Susan Willis. I'm the district's chief financial officer. I'm here tonight with my co-presenter, DeeDee Strout. DeeDee is our Executive Director of Innovation and Implementation. And DeeDee and her team are doing a lot of the ESER fund heavy lifting as far as the training, the application, the implementation of initiatives, and ultimately reviewing data around outcomes and reporting back to the board. So she and her team have done a phenomenal job so far. She and I will be going back and forth in this presentation tonight. This is our first COVID relief funding update. We will be covering information about funds spent to date and what those funds have been targeted on. We will be talking about our plans specifically around the second and third packages, and we will also be talking about our next steps and future actions. But we first want to start tonight with one of DeeDee and her team's early initiatives in cooperation with Strategic Communications and our wonderful media production folks. It is the first in what we hope to be an educational video series on our ESER funds. And so with that, I will kick it off.
You've probably heard about special federal funding coming to school districts across the nation over the next few years. But you may be wondering what it is and how it will affect the work we do in the Wichita Public Schools. Well, in the next two minutes, we'll provide you with the basic information you need to know about this funding and let you know where you can go for more information. Through a series of stimulus bills, school districts across the nation are receiving the largest infusion of federal funds ever. Elementary and secondary schools emergency relief, known as ESER, is providing funds to support districts in preparing for, as well as mitigating the effects of the pandemic. Over three awards, $262 million will be allocated to Wichita Public Schools to support COVID relief through September 2024. This is exciting for our district as we have a once-in-a-lifetime opportunity to support areas that we never thought possible. Now, these funds can't be spent on just anything. Spending must meet allowable use guidelines with a minimum of $35 million allocated to measuring and supporting learning loss. You can find a list of allowable uses on our website. Some of the ways these funds can be used include providing educational technology, improving air quality, and supporting learning loss and closing achievement gaps. In spring of 2021, Wichita Public Schools surveyed families, staff, students, and community members regarding priorities for the use of ESER funds. The top three priorities identified were: activities to address the unique needs of low-income students, students with disabilities, English language learners, racial, ethnic minorities, students experiencing homelessness, and foster care youth; mental health services and support; and providing principals and other school leaders with funds to meet building needs. We will continue to solicit feedback on priorities and spending throughout the funding period. For more information, please visit USD259.org/ESER.
So, well done DeeDee and your team, and certainly thank you to our media production folks and Strategic Communications. I think that was very well done. Okay, so the first item I want to start with tonight, and you have a handout from, that Patrick is handing out, and then you'll have a few other one-page summaries, and we'll kind of walk through each one of those. But first, we want to go back and look at this alphabet soup of acronyms that surround these funds. And we're actually going to go back to the first relief package that Congress passed in March of 2020. And this was, if you recall, right in the kind of the heat of COVID-19 hitting the United States. This is when schools and other businesses started to shut down in kind of response to a growing pandemic. And the Congress signed into effect the Coronavirus Aid, Relief, and Economic Security Act, commonly known as CARES. In the CARES Act, the Elementary and Secondary Emergency Relief Fund, or ESER, was developed. So the fund basically came from the CARES Act, the ESER fund. We didn't call it ESER because at that time, we didn't anticipate future packages. So we just called it CARES. And we continue to kind of call it CARES as this first package. But then, in December of 2020, Congress passed the Coronavirus Response and Relief Supplemental Appropriations Act, or SIRSIA, as it's called, and SIRSIA created a second ESER package. And then in March of 21, the American Rescue Plan was passed, which created the third ESER package. So those three ESER packages each came from separate legislation with their own acronym. So hopefully that makes a little bit of sense. I'm going to show it to you actually in a timeline. So again, going back, the CARES Act was passed March of 2020 that established the ESER One Fund. If you recall, then in June of 2020, the board passed a very significant investment in technology. And this was to basically fast-track the district's plan to get students to a one-to-one technology ratio, which had originally been about a three- or four-year plan, into basically several months. Without the ESER funds, without that CARES money, we would not have been able to do this. Then, as we went into the end of that calendar year, the SIRSIA Act was passed. We get a second package, and then in the following March, the American Rescue Plan was passed, and we get a third package. In March, in kind of response to those second and third packages, the district put out the survey as far as taking those ESER priorities and asking our various stakeholders what was of most critical importance to them. And we reported back to the board what those top priorities were, and DeeDee's going to cover those again as a reminder. Tonight, we're taking that work from basically that March-April, looking at those various points of feedback in that survey and how we've kind of developed initiatives based on that feedback. And then, kind of those following three items are the deadlines for each one of those acts. So by 9:30 of 22, September 30th of 2022, that first package must be spent. By September 30th of '23, the second package must be spent. And by September 30th of '24, the third package must be spent. So if we talk, we go back a little bit and talk about that CARES or ESER One, these funds were spent responding to COVID. We were in the depths of pandemic, and we needed to, again, beef up technology drastically. We needed to provide protective equipment for staff. We needed masks. We needed the hand sanitizer, the cleaning supplies, the air filters, in order to keep schools operational in some form or fashion through that period of kind of the worst of COVID. Not that certainly we're out of it, but we were certainly in that 2020-21 school year, coming back from being shut down. What does school look like? That CARES money was critical to the 2021 school year operational budget. There was no requirement for input as far as gathering feedback or survey data related to CARES money, because again, it was a response funding mechanism. Our primary focus, again, was technology, specifically hardware and access to the internet. And those funds did allow us to safely provide services in that 2021 school year. When we look at those funds kind of holistically, and one of the handouts, and it should say the CARES funding at the top of it, and this chart is in more detail on the website, and we will have that web address again for you at the end of the presentation. But board members, you have a one-pager in front of you with more details than I'm showing on the screen, primarily because you couldn't read it otherwise. But this breakdown shows of that first package allocation to us, which was $17 million, not including the non-public portion. We have expended 100% of that money. This ESER One or CARES package is gone. Almost 62% of it was focused on technology, hardware, software, staff devices, student devices, and internet access for those students that didn't have access. Then, 13.3% on sanitizing supplies, cleaning supplies, masks, and those types of items. Then, 12.84% were on other activities to maintain services, which was primarily COVID testing and vaccine clinics. And then, planning for long-term closures. This was some of the licensure items we had to provide for online curriculum. And then, we had a little bit left for water bottle fillers and those type of things, and some desks for social distancing on those last two items. So this is CARES in kind of a quick synopsis of dollars that have gone out, and we are complete with this particular federal funding. So once we've kind of finished through the ESER One, when ESER Two and ESER Three came out, they came out with different requirements. And that's when we identified, okay, this is going to be a whole lot of work, and we need someone to lead the charge, and that's where DeeDee comes in. So I'm going to pass the next part of the presentation to her.
Thank you, Susan. President Reeser, Superintendent Dr. Thompson, and members of the board, I just want to take the opportunity to say thank you for allowing us to share more information tonight. Our second award, or ESER Two, as we have been calling it, totals around $75.5 million. It does follow the same allowable use guidelines as ESER I, as Susan mentioned. The difference in this particular package is that we now have to apply to KSDE and the Kansas State Board for approval of our initiatives and the work that we want to do. And that's a lengthy process, but that's where Susan mentioned that we started to solicit feedback to drive those initiatives. The same goes for our next package, or award, of ESER III. ESER III totals about $170 million, or almost $170 million. Follows, again, very similar guidelines for spending as ESER I and ESER II. But it does come with a few additional requirements. We had to post our plan for a safe in-person return. We have to spend at least 20% of this particular package on learning loss, targeting learning loss. And our final requirement with ESER III is that we must engage stakeholders in the spending and the use of these funds. So, as mentioned in our video earlier, last spring, we began the process of engaging stakeholders by asking community, staff, family, and students for feedback on what priorities our community and district would like to see addressed. Again, those early priorities identified were: Activities to address the unique needs of our at-risk populations; mental health services and supports; and providing principals and leaders with resources to meet the individual needs of their schools. The feedback gathered, as well as additional inputs, data, and the early identified priorities have been our driving factors in the beginning of this work and the development of what we've called the WPS Advance Plan. As a district, we have established an internal process for reviewing requested initiatives prior to applying to KSDE. After making sure that suggested initiatives are aligned to feedback received, we review to ensure that they meet those allowable use guidelines and support the work of our strategic plan. From there, discussion around measurable outcomes and sustainability post-ESER are had. At this time, I will turn it over to Susan to speak more about the information on utilization.
So, these four pillars are critically important, right? I mean, these are the items that are so time-consuming in the ESER process, because it is important that we know that they're allowable, that we know that there's an alignment to the work that we're doing, and that there's an exit strategy. We need to know if we're going to stop, or if we're going to have another funding available to continue an initiative. Those are questions that we vet through every initiative that gets brought to the table, and it is a time-consuming process. So, what is our ESER II plan to date? And what I want to start with tonight, and this would be the second handout you received, it says ESER II COVID Relief Spending Plan. What this handout shows you is the application process that we've done to date. So, what has gone to KSDE and to the Board of Education at the state level so far? And of the $75.5 million allocated to us with ESER II, we have submitted applications, three of them to be specific, totaling $58.1 million, or utilizing 77% of those funds. And the primary focus, for the most part, has been aligned with the feedback we received from the surveys, specifically around mental health, addressing the unfinished learning somewhat for the high-needs groups, but really to start with more comprehensively for all learners, and then providing principal resources. So, you can see that we've almost 40% of those funds that we've applied for with the state have been specifically to address unfinished learning throughout the system: summer school, increased paraprofessional support, those are kind of a couple of few bigger initiatives. The educational technology, there still is some ongoing needs there, that's been 24.2% of those ESER II applications, and then about 20% for mental health. And then, 7% for principal needs, and then a little bit here and there for other activities to maintain services, sanitation. We had actually, we had some leftover supplies from CARES, so we haven't had to focus much yet on this next ESER package with safety supplies, because we had a good amount. So, this is the application, this is the plan of these ESER II funds so far. And the instructions to us have been, you first plan ESER II to its completion, as far as when you've utilized it all in the application process, then you'll move to ESER III. Now, realize, we're applying for funds based on an estimate of costs. We're saying, we believe this is going to cost, this initiative's going to cost $2 million. We won't see the actuals until they actually occur. And so, we're going to be kind of constantly in flux of estimating, applying, and then we have actuals. We see if there's any leftover, or if we were under, and we have to amend our application. So, it's going to be kind of a moving target through the ESER process of: Apply, review, collect, actuals, submit, revise the application, and start over. So, this isn't a static document by any means, there will be changes, the percentages will change. But we wanted to give the Board a summary of the three applications we've submitted to date, two of which have been approved through the process, one is pending, I believe, the State Board. So, that's kind of where we're at, right, DeeDee? So, your next question might be, okay, Susan, we understand that, but what is the overall comprehensive plan? And so, what we've done so far is we've taken those ESER II initiatives, and we have forecasted them out over the life of both packages. Because if they're working, we're going to continue to do them year over year through the end of the ESER funds. We've also added in our comprehensive plan estimate some facilities work related to air quality. We've looked at summer school costs through 2024. We have identified some unplanned dollars, certainly, that we're kind of waiting for some additional work by the teams, because for a lot of our teams, they were waiting to see what were the needs as the kids came back into school. And we're just completing the first quarter. Some of those data points are just now in the hands of the teams to say, okay, what's really going on? And then, what do we need to do to address those, especially those high, unique need groups? That we knew we had those kind of overarching initiatives, now how do we dig deeper? And how do we get into where the real needs are? So, that's work that's ongoing, that is still to be done. But looking at our chart, you can see of the $245 million, if we take all the initiatives we've applied for so far and add the facilities work and a few of the others that we know are going to come, we're at $202 million if everything would spend out exactly the way we have estimated. That's not going to happen, but that's, as this early forecast, that's what we've done. So, if we thought an initiative was going to cost $10 million, this forecast takes all $10 million into account. If that item actually only costs eight, obviously, that money goes back into unplanned, gets planned into another initiative. So, again, this is going to be, this in particular, is going to be a moving target. We'll update it as initiatives are developed, as actuals come into play, and we'll bring this back to the Board on a fairly regular basis. But you can see, as far as where are the funds targeted, kind of the big buckets, if you will, we have right now 33.4% somewhat reserved for air quality. That doesn't necessarily mean that's the final answer. We're just targeting at least an amount while we start to vet through all the requirements that come into play when we apply for work related to facilities. It's basically a double application. So, there is a lot of work, if you want to do facilities work with ESER. There's a lot of federal requirements with that work. So, we're just kind of, we have this kind of held as we explore what initiatives we think we can get done in the timeframe, what application requirements we can meet, and what gets approved versus denied through that process. So, this is kind of just a placeholder for the moment. Right now, taking those initiatives that we have identified, 22% on addressing unfinished learning. You can see a big chunk, 18%, still remains unplanned, so that's work that will still be done, specifically with a focus on our special ed students, our English language learners, early childhood, homeless, foster care kids. All of that work is, all the teams have been challenged to come up with their plans towards the end of the calendar year, so that as we go into the second semester and into that following school year, we have initiatives that are very specific to those groups. And then, obviously, it looks at unplanned funds, will kind of be going up and down as true costs of initiatives become clear. The educational technology, again, at 10%. Mental health services at almost 7%. Providing principals resources at 6, and then the rest of them kind of fall off into smaller sections.
Do you want?
I can pause.
No, no, you're on here. I was just trying to let her finish, but...
We can pause.
Yes, Ernestine, go ahead.
It's just a clarification.
Yes.
In other words, ESER funds are not limited to, they can be used...
ESER funds can be used either for equipment and buildings, or could be used for programs. Am I correct?
They can be used for programs as long as they relate to, there's a COVID tie. So, we can't do...
Like COVID, like helping children to recover any loss that they had from the time that they were out of school. It could count as that. Or it could be that the air quality in the buildings that we have, or it could be the buying the computers that they could take home.
Yes.
There was not a restriction as to that boundary of hard material versus education.
Correct, right. As long as it fell within one of the 15 allowable uses, whether it was people, or supplies, or equipment, as long as we could establish why we were doing it related to a COVID response, recovery from COVID, then we haven't had any problems so far with items we have requested through the application process with KSDE.
Thank you.
Thank you for that clarification.
Okay. Okay, and we certainly will come back to any additional questions we have on this chart, but I'm going to throw it back to DeeDee for next steps.
So, what are our next steps as a district with our ESER II and ESER III funds? First, we'll continue to solicit more feedback from our community and district by way of service, by way of surveys and some meetings. We are planning both virtual and in-person opportunities. Following this Board meeting, we will post a copy of this presentation that includes a link or a QR code to a brief five-question survey. And we would appreciate any feedback from our community, staff, in regards to the current plan that we have discussed tonight, as well as additional ideas for those remaining funds.
And I'm going to just kind of give, just talk a little bit about how we get the feedback out. So, we won't just announce it here at the meeting. We're actually going to be sending out emails to all of our staff and all of the other community groups that we originally, that we typically go to, our partners. We will be talking to our students about them in Super SAC. We usually typically have conversation with our students as well. And so, everybody, anybody, we actually also put it on social media, so there's opportunities for folks to get on social media. You could go to our website, it's always there for people to also have opportunities to click on the link, watch, and answer any questions that you all may have. If there are other ways in which we need to meet the needs, or we also have community groups that we actually go out to that raise their hands and say, we want you to come to us and present this information. I know we've done that in the past with a couple of groups that wanted to have that happen. So, we're open to gather input in any way that we can. So, I just want to make sure that it's not just talking here today, but that there's a variety of ways in which we meet with our families. If anyone has any additional ways in which they would like for us to get information out, we're open for that as well.
And we'll take that feedback that we've received, we'll continue to review that, solicit that, look at our data, look at how the initiatives are going in our district, and refine to meet the needs of our district. Also, the Office of Innovation and Implementation will continue to refine estimates and make sure that those are posted and available online, so you can see our spending. Again, for more information, you can visit our ESER website. We are committed to transparency, as mentioned, with the allocating of these funds. We'll be updating probably no less than monthly, so, you know, definitely check it often. Again, there's a QR code right there if you do access this presentation online once available for a quick access to that brief survey. So, in summary, this evening, the three packages for USD259 total about $262 million for COVID relief. We have spent down the first award in its entirety, and it went primarily to technology and safety. The other two awards have an application process before the money can be spent to ensure that we're meeting those allowable use guidelines, as well as meeting the needs of our district. We have applied for roughly 77% of our ESER II funds to date. We have around 82% of the total, or a total of the three awards, planned for if we continue those already-approved initiatives into the next two school years. The plan we have applied for, as Susan mentioned, is not static and will change as actual costs become clearer. And last, feedback from stakeholders and data set the priorities for the initiatives. Your feedback sets the priority for the initiatives, and the needs of the district set the priority for initiatives. We must have measurable goals to shoot for, and we must have a sustainability plan once these funds are exhausted. We thank you guys for your time to share information on COVID relief funding, and we'd be happy to take any feedback or questions at this time.
Any questions or statements? Dr. Thompson?
I just want our stakeholders to know, continue to watch our Board agendas, because as we stated before, this will not be our first and last time before you with our ESER dollars. We just believe that it is important for people to be aware of what is happening with these dollars and be able to have some input. So, this will not be the first nor the last. Of course, you've heard it all before, but we will continue to come before you with these reports.
Thank you. Cheryl?
Yes, thank you. Thank you for an excellent report. This was very clear and very, so that we could understand it, very well put. I have two questions. One, all of the ESER II and III funds have to be approved through KSDE, correct?
Yes.
Okay, and I know we've submitted $58 million currently. What kind of a timeline are we on? Because nothing can be ordered, nothing can be approved through the Board. We're kind of at a standstill until we get their approval, correct?
So, we have a couple approaches with that. If it is a significant initiative and we have concerns that there might be some additional scrutiny, or it might be delayed, then we do, and it's not, it's not, it's not holding up anything else, then sometimes we will tell the groups that have applied for the funds that they do have to wait. They have to wait until it gets approved. But most of the time, if we are fairly confident, based on the experience that we've had with applications so far, and it's aligned, the COVID tie is very clear, we can actually utilize other funds and get started on the initiative, and then we come back in with ESER and basically reimburse, which is allowable. So, we aren't necessarily tied, if something is mission-critical, to waiting for the Kansas Board of Education if we feel something is, must go right away. So, we do have some, we have some options, but most of the initiatives that we've done so far have been, we've had some flexibility to wait a little bit.
And, but we have an example of that when we first spent our first CARES money, because we had ordered technology, all of us aware that we were going to have to pick up that bill if the federal government didn't cover it. And that's exactly where we are again.
Yes, and all of these plans actually are retroactive. So, they can, they all go back to that March of 2020. You can go back and pick up expenditures you've already spent in other funds that qualify. So, it does definitely allow a retroactive look back if we have used other funds or, you know... you know, if we're, if we're, if we're needing to kind of go back and recoup something, the funds all allow for that.
Okay, and so we're kind of working off of that same plan. You'll bring things to the board, we'll know that we want to pay it out of ESR, but it's, it's not totally approved, we have to accept it-
Yes.
-as our responsibility if it's not approved.
Yes, that's exactly right.
My second question is, are the rules the same? There are fifteen different areas that they have designated. Are those fifteen rules the same in both the ESR two and the ESR three packages?
DeeDee, you want to take that one? We generally, yes. There, there are a few little tweaks, but they're not significant. They're not, nothing that would change the course of any of our plans so, so far.
Okay, do we anticipate that there will be changes?
I don't anticipate any changes to the allowable uses. Now, there has been some discussion, very local, about is nine thirty of twenty-four realistic with the amount of dollars that are kind of all these districts across the country are facing? When, is that a realistic cliff? And I have heard some discussions as far as lobbying for another year or two to allow those funds to be used. But, again, that's very early, certainly nothing that we've seen legislatively go through, but I, I would imagine as we get kind of closer to that date, we might see more of a general push for, can you extend our deadline a year, so that we can still make use of these? This is a tremendous amount of money to try to embed in a budget, one-time dollars that you know are going to go away, and you don't have replacement funds for them, to, to do something that's meaningful, and yet not, not devastate your system when the money's gone. So, it is, it is extremely challenging to look at initiatives that, that either we can sustain or that are easily pulled back. So, I can easily see, you know, school districts lobbying their congresspeople for some additional time because of the amount of money we're talking about.
Well, and because our state has been a bit proactive, our board of, state Board of Ed, in requiring us to send it through them, we are not seeing the same kinds of problems that other places in the country are of the money being spent on building new schools or whatever, that wouldn't necessarily fall under the fifteen guidelines, is that?
Yes, I, I would actually, I'm going to let DeeDee enter. She's been reviewing very closely the Kansas Board of Ed kind of response, so DeeDee, why don't you take that one?
Yes, you're, you are correct. Building, brand-new buildings, unless there's a very clear tie to COVID relief or a need that has been derived from the pandemic, building a, a brand-new buildings is, is not allowed or, or not encouraged.
And wouldn't be approved by our state.
I can't imagine. KSD's been very, very strong in looking at those COVID rationales, and in fact, they push back even before it gets to the Kansas Board of Ed. If they think it's not going to fly, they have us pull it off the application.
So, you also know there is a task force that is also around, so it's just not KSD. So, what happens is, all of these applications are sent to a task force, and then the task force reads through all of those applications before it gets to the board. And we have weekly meetings every Friday from five o'clock to eight o'clock, if anybody wants to join in, three to five. And then what we do is, we, we go through those applications, and then you can start to make connections to those spaces. And they have declined a number of requests that were out there that people were requesting. So, it's pretty rigorous, and they make you go back and rewrite and make sure that there's linkages, and make sure that there's data collection pieces available before they are able to approve those. So, it pretty, is pretty rigorous to be able to get your items approved.
Thank you.
Thank you, Cheryl. Ernestine?
Well, I just want to thank you, because to, to stay up on top of all of these dollars coming from the federal government for the, we were in a, obviously, a once-in-a-hundred-year situation with the, the impact that COVID has had on our schools. And I'm really grateful that the money came from the federal government, but because we had to spend it quickly to be able to use it to teach our kids and to make our kids be able to operate, I think about that huge amount of buying computers, computing devices for, what was it, forty-nine thousand students that had, and had to teach all the parents how to, how to help their kids get online. I thank you, because I've wondered about how we were keeping track of all of this, and you've just done a spectacular job of keeping track and saying what is being spent and what is being spent for. And I'm looking forward to the, and I am excited about the idea of reaching out to the community and getting the feedback from everybody to see what we will continue to spend dollars on that have to do with helping us to recover from this very difficult time that we've had for the last two to three years.
Thank you. I, I will also express my appreciation to the board, actually, for approving the Oracle upgrade a couple of years ago, because I will tell you, we would not have been able to do this near as well without that investment. We are actually tracking every single initiative in its own award. So, the tracking is tremendous, but we are able to do it by initiative, and so for every initiative we have, I think, just in the first three applications, there were a hundred and thirty different lines, and so we are tracking at that level, and that's early. I mean, we haven't even, we're not even into ESR three yet. So, by the time we add facilities, projects, and other initiatives still to be planned, we will have hundreds and hundreds of awards that we're tracking related to these funds, and we would not have been able to do that without this upgrade, so.
So, the computer upgrade was a part of that?
We actually designed the projects and grants module, knowing this was coming, and it, it has saved us many, many people-hours of work, so it has been just a tremendous, and a tremendous asset, and it makes the reporting of the actuels, because in addition to all the application, we have to give the state quarterly updates on the actuels being spent. It makes the, the data that goes, that uploads to the state on the actuels still a challenge, but it's, it's much easier than it would have been otherwise.
Thanks, to all of you.
And thank you. This was a presentation for board information. No action is necessary, excuse me, for the board and the public's information, no action was necessary. And I think we're ready for the next item.
Next item, under education, every student future-ready strategic plan. Schools are trusted as safe places.
Dr. Thompson, again, I'll let you introduce the topic.
As we do at every Board of Education meeting, we will have opportunities for us to continue to explore our strategic plan for discussions around the plan and for sharing of data, the good, the bad, of everything that we do in the system. So, today, we are here with two of my, I think it should be three of them, three, three, where's my other friend? Oh, there she is. Three of my colleagues, to be able to talk about strategic plan goal number four. There's a lot of pieces to number four, so specifically, we're going to talk about our physical spaces and our safety spaces tonight, and then we'll move into our employability skills areas and things of that nature at, at the next meeting. So, with that being said, I will turn it over to my colleagues.
Good evening. Dr. Thompson, President Reeser, members of the board. I am Gil Alvarez, Deputy Superintendent. With me this evening is my co-presenter, Luke Newman, Division Director of Facilities, and in a few moments, Terry Moses, Division Director of Safety and Environmental Services, will also come forward to share around goal number four, schools trusted as safe places. This evening, we will begin our presentations on the strategic plan goal number four, which is that schools will be trusted as safe places. So, as you know, when we brought you our strategic plan overview this year, we expanded our indicators of success to include not only physical spaces, but also employability skills, because this particular goal is kind of big with, with a lot of information and some data that we want to share with you. We kind of, we've broken it up into different sections. So, tonight, we are focusing on the physical spaces indicator section to exceed the Kansas Safe Schools performance standards and create a safe, civil, productive learning and work environment in all buildings. Luke and I will bring you key updates regarding physical safety, then Terry will come forward and share updates on the Kansas Safe Schools performance standards. So, to get started, this first slide is around the PPE and disinfecting supplies. So, as you've heard in our presentation earlier, on ESR expenditures from Susan and DeeDee, a significant commitment in our early ESR expenditures has, has been the purchase of personal protection equipment, or PPE. And you can, I'm not going to read the actual table, but you can see from July through October to 2021, of all the different disinfecting items that we have and have been delivered as well. We heard early, and we heard often, from our stakeholders, that it was essential to have adequate PPE to support safe school environments. We've shared much with you over the last twenty months or so about our investment in PPE, and we wanted to bring you an update on our indicators so far this academic year in terms of PPE provisions to our schools. I would point out that we continue to buy local through our partnership with the Wichita Brewing Company, as they manufacture hand sanitizer to fulfill local demand. And I want to remind any staff who may have a need for additional PPE, that it is available at no cost to any of our staff through our internal purchasing portal. So, I will now turn it over to Luke, who will present on how our facilities department has kept our buildings safe. Luke?
All right, thank you, Gil. Well, as you said, I'm the Director of Facilities, and I'll be giving an overview of all the work we've been doing in our physical spaces, as well as some initiatives we have planned as part of our ongoing commitment to providing safe and secure facilities to our students and staff. So, our, I'll start with our custodians, who started some phenomenal work with our COVID protocols a year ago now or so, when the pandemic began, and they are continuing that great work, starting with electrostatic fogging every night using a hospital-grade disinfectant. They have an enhanced restroom cleaning protocol, disinfecting high-touch points in the, in the restrooms twice a day, as well as various deep cleaning measures. They are frequent, frequently disinfecting high-touch points in the buildings, that includes door handles, light switches, faucets, counters, et cetera, and they are using HEPA vacuums to clean carpets, and that's high-efficiency particulate air filters. And continuing with facilities work that we started and are continuing on with, twenty-five, twenty, twenty-five percent outside air is what we are currently still bringing in in our HVAC systems, and we are running our systems longer, so we run them two hours early, earlier in the morning, and run them two hours later in the evening to assist with air dilution efforts. And in addition to that, we are conducting physical onsite measurements and building auditing through our control systems to ensure that we're meeting the targets that we've set for ourselves in those two regards. I'm sorry, Gil, go back, thanks. Additionally, we are replacing our filters in our HVAC units quarterly, and we have also installed over four hundred bottle fillers district-wide since the start of the pandemic. Thanks, Gil. Okay, which brings me to future work. As we look to the future and how to best utilize our ESR dollars for, for facilities, our first step in planning is to conduct a comprehensive HVAC deep-dive audit of our systems, and that is what the board approved about a month ago now. We are underway with that, with that process, and from that, we will, we'll come out of that with a really clear idea of where our greatest needs are in our buildings, specifically to, to indoor air quality and our HVAC systems. So, we'll be able to really come up with a, a really accurate priority list of systems that need replaced and reconfigurations that we can, that we can do in our buildings to just make them healthier environments than they currently are. Not that they're not current, not that they're not healthy now, but we're always trying to improve and get better, right? And so, those are, some of those items that we'll be looking to replace are our chillers, boilers, rooftop units, air handlers, and then the system reconfigurations. We're also looking at replacing all of our obsolete HVAC controls systems. So, right now, we have a kind of a wide variety of HVAC controls in our buildings, and we're looking to get to one standard controls platform, and that's going to allow us to more proactively monitor our systems and just, you know, provide more consistency in our buildings across the board. And that leads me to that, that next item on there, which is data analytics, and that's maybe the, the item that I'm most excited about of all of them. It's going, so when we start getting the data analytics software running and underway with the new controls platform across the board, so that's a big reason why we want to have that standard controls, is because it'll allow us to pull all of it through one software platform, that's a, it's a data analytics module that, that is continually running and checking for issues in your HVAC systems. And so, we'll be able to detect those issues and problems that are occurring in our systems and our buildings, those failures, before the school even knows that there's any issues. So, just one more thing we're going to be doing to ensure we have healthy spaces and high-quality, high, in, very, very high-quality indoor air. All right, next slide, thank you. And so, a few more items that we are targeting in addition to the HVAC initiatives, drinking fountain retrofits, we're going to continue on with that work. Our goal is to have all drinking fountains retrofit with bottle fillers or replaced entirely with a new, a new bottle filling station. And we are looking at replacing windows that are not operable with operable ones to promote that, that fresh outside air. And then one more item that we are exploring currently, we don't know for sure if we'll be able to do it, but really interested in looking at roof replacements. The way our HVAC systems are configured, there's a lot of, I'll say, there's, the roofs contribute a lot to the indoor quality of our, of our air through our HVAC systems. It's kind of a, kind of an open system exposed to the roof in, in some of our, in quite a few of our buildings. And so, I, I believe that the roofs are, are a strong contributor to just the overall indoor air quality in our buildings, and so, would really like to look at getting a, a number of our roofs replaced using ESR dollars in that, with, with that same mindset, so. And I think that's all I have.
Thank you, Luke. At this time, I'm going to invite Terry Moses down, Division Director of Safety and Environmental Services, who's going to take us on a little journey and some engagement activity as well. So, we invite, and we're still on goal number four, trusted safe places, so just another component of how we're keeping our buildings safe.
Okay, first of all, I want to say a big thank you to our two youngsters who spoke earlier today, the Super SAC, because they gave me a perfect warm-up. They talked about safety, and they talked about ways that they can engage students in the classroom. And so, when we were preparing for this, we talked about how can we engage you in this presentation? So, we are going to engage you in this presentation. If you go down to your bottom bar, you're going to see an E down there that's "You're not on," another internet option for you. We've already logged you in, and the student, Derek, talked about using a platform that involves engagement, and it's called Kahoot. And we are going to let you play Kahoot. So, we're going to have Patrick kind of walk behind everybody and make sure everybody is logged in and ready to go, and also, those of you that have computers here or phones, although we know the internet service or the, the cellphone service here is not very good, but Esaw is on, on his computer, I know, because he is very competitive, and whenever we play these, he's always very competitive. And it will also tell you that we don't let Patrick play, because he always wins. So, we won't let him log in, but the rest of you are logged in. So, we'll just give Patrick a second here to get us all logged in, and then we're going to do this through engagement, and it's a way to provide information in the classroom. We do it for our Principals Academy, we do it when we teach staff. It's just a way to keep staff engaged as we ask questions as we go along. So, I'm going to ask you a question, and you will have either a true-false answer on your computer, or you'll have a multiple choice, and it'll give you a series of just a couple of seconds to give the answer, and here we go. And Stephanie Quick over here is running the computer for me, because I find it's easier to work with a assistance as we go. So, we're going to talk about future-ready goal number four, schools trusted as safe places. Again, future-ready, our goal by 2023 is to get an approval rate of ninety percent or higher from students, staff, and parents in all safety categories. So, our first question we have for you tonight, in order, well, I'm sorry, first question, I- I, we talked about the lead measure we have for safety services. In the same year that we started our strategic plan, the state of Kansas issued safe and secure school standards, and our personal wig in safety services is to exceed the state standards. So our first question for you. Crisis management includes five phases, and the answers will pop up here. Prevention, protection, mitigation, response, and what? Red is resolution, blue is recovery, that yellow is rescue, and the green is review. And you've got three more seconds to respond. Aha! Great job! Nine of you got it right. And that's, you can see how interactive we are here. It just gives you the answer to think, and it gives us the opportunity to show you were right. So a majority of the people in here were right, and it also gives you a scorecard, but just for time tonight, we're going to go faster through the scorecard. So I'm going to real briefly walk you through this wheel, and anybody who's working in crisis should really look at it from a totality of circumstances, not just that response. When we talk about crisis, people always jump to what are you going to do when something happens? Well, we've got to look at it from an overview. An example would be prevention. That's the training, the education that we give people to deal with situation. Protection, an example I give you would be our visitor management system. We can control who comes and goes from our buildings. Mitigation, a greatest example, and I'll thank Luke for this and his folks in facilities, our storm room, our shelters. We can't control whether a tornado hits our building, but we can certainly mitigate the damage to human beings by having storm shelters. Then we have that red bullseye there, the crisis happens. Our response, the best example I've got you for response is COVID. Two years ago, two years ago, November of 2019, did we start hearing about COVID in the national news? We have been responding to COVID for almost two years. And then recovery, an example I'll give you was College Hill. Those of you who were with us during that time, we had a crisis at College Hill, and we missed a total of five learning days. Five learning days it took us to respond. And so that's a total crisis prevention wheel. That's how we do learning through Kahoot. Next question. True or false? Since 2018, public schools have been awarded over 2.5 million in grants to increase our school safety efforts. Again, true or false? We'll give you a total of 15 seconds. It doesn't take us, oh, popped right up faster than that. Excellent job! True is the answer. Kind of tricky, because the grants that Susan talked to were not a part of this, but at the same time, we started our strategic plan. If you'll remember back, we got almost a million dollars in both 1819 and 1920 from the state of Kansas to improve our facilities in regards to safety. And then we have applied with, in our work group for two different federal grants. One's is the COPS, which is the Community Oriented Policing Services, and the other one is a Stop Violence Grant Program. And these are just things that we have applied for outside of ESSER fundings to make sure that our schools are trusted as safe places. Next question. True or false? Safety Services Department conducts building safety evaluation in collaboration with local law enforcement. True or false? And the system takes the opportunity here to jump forward when everybody answers, but I can tell you that it scratches out right there. We would rather be proactive than reactive in this case. Aha! Great job! 14 of you got it right. Yes, we do. We take the time to do building safety services. Some of the things that we look at and we partner with the Wichita Police Department, the Bel Air Police Department, and the Park City Police Department, because we have schools in all three of those jurisdictions. We've upgraded a lot of our camera systems. We've added additional cameras. We've added additional card readers, and that is using your ID badge to get into a building, so we don't have hard keys. That allows us to track who's in our buildings. We've added interior door locking mechanisms. Again, our students talked about that when they were up here this evening. And then staff radios. One of the things that we know, and we've already seen it here, you don't have great cellphone coverage in all of our buildings, so we really want to make sure that people communicate, especially in a crisis situation. So we've added a lot of additional radios so that we can have two-way communication throughout our buildings. Next question. What is the minimum number of crisis drills, including fire and tornado, that a school must do each year? And this is based on Kansas State statute. What is the minimum number of drills that we must do each year? Red, three, blue is six, yellow is nine, and green is nine. Oh, we got a little bit of a tricky one there. We kind of threw some people off. The answer is nine. We've gone up and down on this a little bit, but the bottom line is we have to do four fire drills, we have to do two tornado drills, and then our principals have the opportunity to choose what drill they do for the other three. So they can do an evacuation drill, they can do a medical emergency drill, they can do a gas smell drill, a variety of things. We even have earthquake drills that are there. One of the things that I say most often, and I do this a lot with our principals, and I also do it when I get calls from parents, the single most important reason we do for drills is to instill confidence. And that is, I'm comfortable that I can get to my tornado shelter, I'm comfortable that I can get out of my building and where I need to be in a timely manner for a fire drill, and I'm not scared. I know that I can handle these situations. And we know when we have confidence in crisis situations, we're going to remain calm, and we're going to be able to effectively put into practice what we knew are good ways to handle crisis situations. So if you want to memorize anything tonight, instill confidence rather than create fear for drills. Next question. True or false? Public Schools Department has staffed 24 hours a day, 365 days a year, including Christmas, Thanksgiving, my birthday, everything else. No, they're always there. The answer is yes. We are very fortunate, and I will also brag to you, I think we are one of the, and some people tell me, we are the only school district in the state of Kansas that has our own people working 24/7. Some other districts will rely on 911 to relay information to their folks if they get a call, but we actually have people working 24/7. Through our ESSER funding that was talked about earlier, we've recently added six additional security positions to support our schools, and these positions will be provided to the principals in order and our leaders with the resources they need to address individual needs of school. So that's just an example of what we're doing. But we do have people that work 24/7. After hours, right now, you have somebody that's working here. You cannot believe how many events we have in the evenings at our schools. I can tell you, and Luke knows, these buildings are open almost every single night of the week. And then overnight, certainly, we have people that watch out for our buildings for alarms. An example I give, we have freezer alarms, refrigerator alarms. So at an elementary school where your milk is being stored all night, we have alarms on those coolers, and if they get below a certain temperature, they tell us, and we go check them, so we can make sure that the milk that your child gets the next day is safe. So that's just a really tedious example, but it's one that's very important that we do. Next question. True or false? School attacks are rarely sudden and impulsive. We get a lot of information from our federal partners, the Department of Homeland Security, the Secret Service, all do studies on things like home and school attacks, and the answer to this one is true. They are rarely sudden or impulsive. And this is kind of the information that we provide to our district crisis team, so that they know how to respond and what's going on. It's also information that we provide to our principals when we meet with them, and it's also information that we use when we design programs to meet the needs of our schools. School attacks are preventable when you know the signs, and we try to teach people what the signs are. Are we talking about violence? Are we researching violence? Do we have a preoccupation with guns? Are we making threatening statements? And intervention is key. So our next question. That intervention comes in the form of trained threat assessors. The Wichita Public School District has how many trained threat assessors? Red is 96, blue is 55, yellow is three, and green is 223. And the right answer is, good job, folks! You're doing great! When you talk about the number of schools we have, we have 94 schools. We try to have a threat assessor in every school, and certainly our larger schools, all of our high schools, we want to have multiple threat assessors. The purpose of the threat assessment is to determine how credible that threat is. Was this just an off-the-cuff statement, somebody that was mad in the moment? Or have we thought about this for a while, like those, those school attacks that were researched? Is there a plan in place? Do we have access to a way to carry out a threat? So we need to determine if the person is making the threat, has the capacity to carry it out, and most importantly, we need to enter, identify those interventions needed to provide support. In other words, somebody's angry. Do we need to provide anger management training? Do we need to make sure that we have a safety plan in place so that student can continue to come to school and be successful? Next question. The district uses a system to monitor all student and staff internet traffic. True or false? Hey, good jo, woo! We got 100%! Guys are doing great! Hang in there! That means even Esaw got that one right. You're in fourth place, hang in there, Esaw! You're doing great! Several years ago, and I'll thank Rob for this, as we have advanced in our internet process, we have internet filters. So when a student does a search online that says, "I hate myself, what do I do?", they make a suicidal statement, or they search the word suicide, or these key words, kill, suicide, runaway, guns, gangs, that then sends an alert to our SADAF and Safety Services. We then filter through those alerts to determine if there's something that we should be concerned about, and then we send them on to either the school staff, or after hours, we will contact law enforcement or contact the parent involved. Many times, we find out, for example, school shootings, that the school has or the class has assigned school shootings as, as school assignment. So we see all of a sudden a whole bunch of searches of Columbine, Park City, or of those, those kind of things, and we can rule those out fairly quickly. But this allows us to take those key words and provide follow-up with necessary, and we feel that it's very productive. I know that we have had a number of parents that have contacted us and said, "Thank you for taking the time to pay attention to what my student is searching." Next question. What is the name of the Wichita School District's anonymous tip line for reporting school safety concerns? And your choices are Red, Speak Up, Blue, Tips R Us, Yellow, Safe to Tell, or Green, Report It. And the answer is, good job! Speak Up! That is what we use. We are very fortunate to partner with the Wichita Police Department and the Wichita Metro Area Crime Commission to make sure that we have an anonymous reporting program. We changed it a couple of years ago, so it is now done via an application, because we know that students don't like to call and talk to people on the phone. They want to do it by an application. And we continue to use this. When you look nationwide at things that they recommend for schools to have, an anonymous reporting program is an absolute must. So Speak Up is what we use. Another partnership that's very important to us is our next question, and that is, how many school resource officers are there in the district? Red is one, blue is five, yellow is six, and eight is green. First of all, I would like to, hey, great job, everybody! First of all, I would like to tell you that we would like to have a lot more of them, but that's all a part of, it's budgetary, as we know. But when we have SROs, one of the things that we focus on with SROs is they're not there only as a law enforcement officer. And that's one of the concerns we get a lot from the public, but our SROs are there as a teacher educator, and they teach people about law-related functions, like what do you do when you're stopped by a law enforcement officer? What happens if you get a ticket? What happens in the court system? Educating people about public safety careers or ideas. They're also a counselor and a mentor, and that is just somebody in a uniform that a student can go to with a problem that they may be able to help them with. And of course, finally, they are a law enforcement officer. Next question. Another fantastic partnership that we have. WPS, in partnership with Wesley Hospital, provided Stop the Bleed training to how many 259 employee staff members? And we started this program about four years ago. Red is 500, blue is 856, yellow is 1675, and green is 2392. And the answer is 2392. Wesley, through no cost to us, has provided training to over 2,000 of our employees on Stop the Bleed. After Sandy Hook happened in 2012, a group of medical officials across the United States looked at things that could have done, could have happened better in that school shooting situation, and one of the things they determined is simple training on Stop the Bleed. And this is, this works for a car accident, this works for a lawn mowing accident, anything. So Wesley, we have partnered with them, and they have come in, and they've provided, provided training to over 2,000 of our staff in the simple process of Stop the Bleed, and it's just a great example of another partnership that we have to make sure that our schools are safe. Next question. Goal four, success is measured by which of the following data sources? Safe and Civil School Survey is red, Employee Engagement Survey is blue, UTW workload Survey is yellow, and green is all of the above? And I can tell you that people are very competitive on this one. They will answer Safe and Civil because they see it and they think it, and they won't read all the way to all of the above. So that's one of the ways I always get people, is because they don't take the time to read all the answers, they think they know the right answer. So our success measures are Safe and Civil, you can move on, the Employee Engagement, and of course, the UTW workload. So our very last slide that we're going to give you today, we're done playing the game anyway, our, our last slide is the measurements that we have, and, and we've got a typo up there, I see. It's actually, the dark blue one should be instead of 1819, that should be 1920. And then you see the light blue one is 2021 with an asterisk. We didn't do a full Safe and Civil survey in 2021, simply because we didn't have access to people to do surveys in 2021. And now in 2022. So the dark blue is Safe and Civil, the kind of lighter blue is our Employee Engagement, and then the red is UTW. I am not surprised, I'm very happy with the numbers. You can see that they have dropped a bit, but I am not surprised because of COVID. COVID had a lot to do with safety and a lot to do with how people perceived their safety. So when we look at these surveys, I'm very happy to see that our numbers remain high, very close to our 90% target, but I'm, I'm not surprised to see that, that they've dropped just a little bit. So that is the presentation that we have in regards to Kahootit. It's just an example of how we use engagement to teach people, whether it be our students or our staff. And so we're going to turn it back over to Gil.
I must, I must.
Thank you.
I must say, I felt like I was back in high school copying off the two smart kids.
Well, thank you. This, the slide that you had the data on, it was about how students feel safe in school, so it was really, how do, how do the parents think that the students feel safe in school? How do the staff feel, and how do the students themselves feel? So we're open to any questions you may have around our presentation on goal number four.
Gil, I do not see any questions. Dr. Thompson, you want to close the topic?
We thought you'd enjoy a little fun this evening, and ways in which we engage not only our students, but we also do this with teachers, so that they stay actively engaged. so that they stay actively engaged in the process and in the lesson. So we figured you'd be asleep, so we thought we'd wake you up this evening. Thank you for your participation.
Thank you.
And by executive order, I have declared myself the winner. And Esau finished last. That's not, I'm sorry, that's not what the executive order says.
Patrick, next item, please.
Next item, consent.
We'll do this a little different. Ben, do you have any consent items to pull?
Ben Blankley, District 1, I have no consent items to pull.
Cheryl Logan?
Cheryl Logan at large, I have no items to pull.
Ernestine?
Ernestine Crable, District 3, I have no items to pull.
Julie?
Julie Hedrick, District 2, I have nothing to pull.
Ron?
Ron Rosales, District 6, I have nothing.
Mia?
Mia Turner, District 5, I have nothing to pull.
Stan Reeser, District 4, and I have no consent items to pull. I'll entertain a motion to adopt the consent agenda.
Ben Blankley, District 1, I move to adopt the consent agenda.
Moved by Ben and seconded by Cheryl. Patrick, next item, please.
Next item, policy.
I don't know if Dr. Thompson wants to review any of the policies. It looked like a lot of language cleanup, but if there's any board members that have any current concerns or suggestions for change. Dr. Thompson, maybe I'll just let you kind of review real quick what the policy areas are, and if I'm correct on that assessment on.
They're very, just some cleanup of some language, adding some, combining a couple of policies, just so that they don't, you know, as you've seen in the appendices. So it's just as is. So they're just combining, deleting, those kinds of things. So it's very self-explanatory. Any questions you all have?
Or suggestions. This is just the first review of the policy. We will have a second review, but I don't see any big changes on these policies. So I think we're good to go, and if anything comes up, you can bring it up on the second review. Patrick, next item, please.
Next item, under operations, retention benefit.
And Dr. Thompson, I'll let you introduce this topic as well.
All right. So it's pretty self-explanatory as well. So what I have is, the three of us are here, and we're able to answer any questions that any of you may have. But what I will say is that this has been a tough reboot for our system. As we've come to you with many challenges that we've had around hiring, we have still many vacancies that are open. We've had, all over the system, whether it's nutrition service workers, whether there's bus drivers, teachers, paraprofessionals, just the gamut. And our staff is filling in, everybody's stepping up, on top of all the other responsibilities that they have in the workplace. And this is not unique to Wichita, but it definitely is something that we in Wichita are trying to work collaboratively with SEIU, UTW, and anybody else that we have opportunities to visit with, that emails us, have ideas, thoughts, and we respond to those, because this is just a challenge, and there's not a lot of answers. So what we are trying to do is, we're trying to listen to the responses from our teachers in ways in which we can better support them. There's many things that we're still working through, but this was one that we were able to do. And it's interesting, because a lot of people come with a lot of ideas, and, and it seems like we could just do some of these things that people ask us to do, but sometimes we're not able to, because there's consequences to every decision or thing that we are able to do. So this was an opportunity that we, we explored extensively, to try to see if there was a way that we could put some things in place for retention for our staff, so that they would stay with us, and we'll do that incrementally throughout the year, so that we have opportunities to retain our staff, the ones that we do have, that are still continuing to stay in this wonderful, wonderful, wonderful profession of teaching and supporting our schools. So for the most part, it's very self-explanatory. What we would like to do is to be able to, at Christmas, to give a 1.5%, and if I say this all wrong, my teammate will correct me, percent retention bonus to our teachers and all staff. So everybody emails me, "What about those substitutes?" Yes, you too, everybody.
And temporary employees.
And temporary employees, yes, you too. So we would do a 1.5% there. And then at spring break, we'll have an, another opportunity to do a 1% retention bonus as well, okay? And people will say, "Well, is this an addition, this is in addition to the, the bonuses that they received at the beginning of the year, at the end of the year, that you've already approved for them?" And the answer is yes. So this is just another opportunity to say to teachers, "We see you, we can't do everything that you ask us to do, but what we can do is, whatever we can try to do and find opportunities to give to you, we're going to." And so this was just another opportunity for us to do that. And I know we're looking for time, I heard you before, we're looking, and we know that you're looking at the reduction of some things, and some slowing down of some things, and we hear you, and we are looking to see where we can do those things as well. So we, we're not just doing this and saying, "Oh, that, that makes up for the time that you want to have, to do some additional time for planning, and to take a breath, and, you know, all the other things that I know that I've heard you all say. We hear you, and we're working on those things as well." But this is just another way for us to say that we appreciate you, and for all the things that you are doing, to continue to keep us moving until we're able to, to get past some of these shortages with the hiring and all those other kinds of things, and, and also as we move into, hopefully, post, post-COVID work. So that's pretty much the gist in a nutshell. If there are any questions that we have from the board seats, we're stand, ready to answer
Sean, did you have any, or Susan, did you want to say anything?
I think the superintendent kind of summarized it up there.
I think she did an excellent job, sir. So, you know. No, this was just a little continuity from last month's presentation, carrying forward. Obviously, we're looking to provide some sort of continuity of services, and we wanted to move forward by offering this retention bonus to the employees that are doing the work of many. And so we were not surprised to see that the US unemployment rate is now at 4.6% at the federal level, and they deem by the Bureau of Labor Statistics, 4.1 to 4.7 to be full employment. In Sedgwick County, we're currently sitting at 4.9, in the state of Kansas, we're at 3.7. So again, it's just getting harder and harder to find those employees. But our efforts have not given up, and we will continue to do so, so this was our way of saying thank you.
Cheryl?
Well, I want to thank the administration for looking widely, to be able to try to figure out things, to report all of our employees. And yes, it's absolutely for our teachers, but it is for everyone else as well, because nobody's working under the same circumstances that they worked under two years ago. And we recognize that. I do want to ask a question, and that's about, in the agenda, it talks about, it's from all funds. Can you explain that just a little bit for me, so that I understand? Because we have to watch very carefully, make sure we can pay for what we say.
Yes. So just to kind of cover a few facts, when we were looking at the financial feasibility of this approach, we looked at the number of active working guest teachers, so that, comparing that over previous years, and so we've gone from 746 guest teachers down to 487. We've seen 138 employees in all categories leave in just these past three months. If we compare that to similar timeframes in the last few years, we were at 90 in 2018, we were at 118 in 2019. So we're seeing greater turnover in the, in the first three months of this year compared to other years. Vacancies are the, are the real story, though. In a, in a normal year, we would run around 100. If I look back at 2019, we were at 113. We're over 250 vacancies right now. So vacancies are budgeted positions that live in all funds. When we don't fill those spots, those dollars are budgeted for salaries, but aren't being used, because we can't hire the people. So what our plan to do is to take the dollars budgeted for salaries and spend them on salaries, they're just being spent on our, the people that are doing the work. So it, it is essentially moving salaries from those vacancies that we don't believe we have a good chance of filling, particularly teaching staff, at this point in the year. We can, we can hire a few, and we'll hire a few wherever we can, but we're not going to fill 85 teaching vacancies between now and May. We're not going to probably fill 100-plus para vacancies throughout, in the near future. Well, again, HR is, is working very diligently, every single day, they're turning over every single rock known, known, to try to find labor. But right now, those vacancies are just a placeholder for, for budget. So we're going to, instead of having that just sit there, we're going to give it to, to the staff that are doing the heavy lifting. I will tell the board, there is some risk. I mean, let's just be perfectly honest, it's early in the fiscal year, right? Typically, with vacancy savings, we're waiting to see what our audited enrollment looks like. We don't have that information yet. We won't have that data until January. There's a lot of budget year left. It's, it is November, there's still a number of months yet. But the board has situated us financially to, to better make these decisions earlier, primarily because of its work around contingency reserve. So a few years ago, when contingency was very, very low compared to our overall budget, to take this kind of, of risk, we couldn't, we didn't have much to mitigate the risk. Now we have at least a contingency if our estimates are somewhat off, or if we have a spring utility issue like we had last February, where, where gas prices skyrocketed. Or if fuel goes to $5 a gallon, or something like that. Before, we were kind of, we were kind of, we had to hold on to that to see what might happen. Right now, at least if there is something that happens, the board has, has options. And so rather than sit on salary savings in a very unusual year, where it's kind of the perfect storm of factors impacting our employment, we can, we can take, we can take an earlier action. The other thing, too, is we're not using Esser dollars for this initiative. But our initiatives that are working to help students are coming through Esser. So we don't have to look at our normal budget for Esser initiatives, because we have Esser dollars. So in a, in a, we have those dollars that can be, can stay targeted to salaries, we're using salary dollars. So we don't, we, we're not doing a whole lot of new initiatives, because our focus is COVID recovery, and Esser's paying for that.
Thank you for that explanation, because I think our public needs to know, you know, we want to give back to our staff when we can. And if we can't hire, which we're trying desperately to do, but if we can't, there is going to be a little money there that we can use to reward our staff for doing extra work, because they are, and we recognize that. So thank you for being proactive, I greatly appreciate it, and I'd like to make a motion that we accept this.
I am happy to report that since our last month meeting, we made job offers to 55 new substitute teachers in our district.
Yes, that's great. And I'm sure you're, you're pounding the college doors to get those December graduates as well.
Our recruiters are already geared up, their gas tanks are full, and they're ready to go.
That's great, thank you. I second Cheryl's motion.
Okay, we have a motion on the floor. I just had a quick question. So we basically, another way to look at this is, we have an X amount of staff, we budgeted for that X amount of staff, because that then translates into a Y amount of work and teaching. Since we don't, since we didn't fill all those positions, we're using the dollars that we have budgeted for the teaching hours to actually go into the teachers that we were planning on them, but it will just go to the existing teachers that have had to double up at times, and all the other challenges they've faced this year.
You're absolutely correct.
Any other questions before we take a vote? Okay, we have a motion on the floor, moved by Cheryl and seconded by Ernestine. Motion carries 7-0. Patrick, next item, please.
Next item, under miscellaneous, superintendent's report.
No report.
Mia?
I have nothing.
Julie?
Julie Hedrick, District 2, I do have a request tonight, and that request is for Superintendent Thompson, and I think I'm probably also supposed to fill out my form, aren't I? Okay. My request is, would you please bring to the board some options to the overcrowding concerns at Krista McCullough Academy and Southeast High School?
And we'll give you time to fill that out. Patrick, did you get the actual request? Do you have that down?
I do.
Okay.
And yes, ma'am.
Thank you.
And Julie, do you have any other requests or reports?
Nope, that's it for tonight.
Cheryl?
Okay, I just want to congratulate all of our high school bands. I was able to go to the Bandorama. They do such great work. It was just a fun evening, because you got to hear all of our high school bands playing and marching on the field. At the beginning, they all played the Star Spangled Banner together, and it, it riled any Star Spangled Banner presentation I've ever heard. So it was great, great fun.
Stan Reeser, District 4, I just want to also acknowledge some of our state legislators that mentioned this bonus idea during the height of our concerns. I know State Representative Susan Estes brought this up, but I think there was other state representatives as well. So I just didn't want the public to, to think that this was just a, an idea that spurred on strictly from the seven of us and our staff. We also had our friends in the legislature that helped us on this issue as well, and we appreciate that. Ben?
Ben Blankley, District 1, I am officially a lame duck, as of this meeting. So, so this is my second to last board meeting, so as is tradition, I will explain all of the district events that I went to since the last meeting. There's not a lot, but I did get to also go to Bandorama, or as my first grader has called it for several years now, the football concert. So, so that was, that was, it was great. The, this, this, I mean, I don't think those stands could have accepted one more person. It was absolutely packed, and it was wonderful. And then I also got to attend the Aces in the Alley event on October 22nd, and that's where the East High Aces, their fine arts and performing arts, go out into the, what used to be the pop-up park downtown. I think it's still a pop-up park, sort of, but it's the Chain Link Gallery now. And, and they, we got to see some visual arts, we got to participate in some things, we got to see some, some folk lARico dancing, so that was pretty cool. So yeah, we, me and the little had a great time there. On October 26th, I got invited to the February Neighborhood Association meeting, which was really neat. And then as a preview, I haven't gone to this yet, because it's tomorrow afternoon, but I get to hang out with a bunch of fellow math nerds down at the ISC tomorrow afternoon, because there is a math academy that's going on that I was invited to. So I'll be So I'll be taking some time off work to go visit with some other math nerds. So that's an exciting opportunity for me. And then I, I've completed every single public speaking event over the course of the campaign with the same message, please get your vaccines. I've said multiple times that once my kid was eligible, I would be first in line. And Sunday afternoon, my first grader got his very first COVID vaccine shot. And I was a little worried that he was going to like wake up with a fever or a sore arm or something. Nope, nope, he's fine. He went to school right on time. He was more concerned about the, the autumn colors in the neighborhood and the leaves falling than anything else. So, so yeah, his second shot is scheduled three weeks from yesterday and, and we'll get over this. And that's all I have.
Thank you, Ben. Ernestine?
I want to thank all the voters who came out to vote. And I appreciate the fact that the candidates and, all of the candidates and the voters took this as a serious thing. Unfortunately, there's a whole lot of folks out there that don't take it seriously. And I hope that they understand that 50,000 students and what do we, how many employees we have, 9,000, thereabouts? There's an awful lot of lives that are involved in the decisions that are made in the school board. So I appreciate the candidates and I appreciate the voters and I thank you all for being good citizens. The other thing is I just am, I'm so grateful that we can give this basically a thank you bonus to these teachers, these employees, these people who have been keeping our places sanitary, Esau. We appreciate, they've done double duty, they've done triple duty. There have been teachers that have been asked at the last minute to come in on their planning period, on, on their lunch hours and all of these things. And it's been the most exhausting time ever. And I know some of those young teachers don't know that this is not normal. They may think that this surely can't be normal. But I just want to say thank you to them all, thank you to all the employees. And I just, I just can't say it enough. And we, we're glad to give you a little money, but it's not the same as a pre-COVID hug, which I would give you. That's all.
Thank you, Ernestine. Ron?
Yeah, I was just looking forward for the Veterans Day celebration this coming Thursday. I unfortunately missed the parade, but I'm sure we were well represented. And also the representation our sports teams did during the playoffs, North High Soccer, East High and Northwest Football. And also I had a chance to go to the Pando Initiative here in North High and got to see Reality U in person. So thank you, I personally thanked all the Pando people. I saw them at the KSB and really thanked them. So if you haven't gone to the Reality U at your high school, please check it out. And then KSB conference was this weekend. And just a few things that we're doing along with a lot of the other schools around the state, security that was mentioned earlier. We're right with, pretty much in step with the rest of the state on that. Dual language learning and of course, our pathways. So a pretty good conference, learned a lot. That's all I got.
Thank you, Ron.
Yep.
Patrick, next item, please.
Next item, new business.
Seeing no new business, next item, please.
Next item, executive session.
Ben?
Ben Blankley, District One, I move that the Board of Education recess into executive session regarding matters relating to actions adversely or favorably affecting a person as a student. And the open meeting will resume at approximately 8:35 in this room.
Is there a second?
Julie Hedrick, I second.
Motion carries seven zero, we are now in executive session. Thank you, sir. Education is returning from executive session. Ben, we have, Ben will offer a motion in regard to the student appeal hearing.
Ben Blankley, District One, I move to uphold the decision of the appeal hearing and offer the Acceleration Academy program to the student until he returns from expulsion.
Is there a second? It's been moved by Ben and seconded by Cheryl on the appeal hearing. Motion carries seven zero. Patrick, next item, please.
Next item, adjournment.
Ben Blankley, District One, I move to adjourn.
A second.
Moved by Ben, seconded by Mia to adjourn. Passes seven zero, we are adjourned.